Please rise for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing and if you choose, join me in the Lord's prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Thank you.
Good recommendation. We lost a mailman here in tragic, tragic incident that should never happen anywhere, not only in America, but in the world. So let's have a moment of silence for him and his family.
Thank you.
Yeah, our next public workshop will be Tuesday, March 12th, ten thirty a.m. in this room. And our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, March thirteenth, also ten thirty a.m. in this room. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, and the regular meeting dated February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve. Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No, because I don't believe they're done correctly and the video recordings skipped.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco. Item number three is to approve the annual appropriation resolution to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of Trumbull County during the fiscal year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four, for the general fund and all other funds of Trumbull County.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Discussion. The, uh, just so the public's aware, the Board of Commissioners didn't have any input on our budget. It was prepared by the Auditor's Office staff. We do not have any capital improvement budget or any capital budget whatsoever. Uh, the, some of the quotes I heard last week at the workshop, which were troubling relative to the budget, uh, is that the budget's not, uh, set in stone. I mean, it should, we should have a budget that we make an effort to adhere to. Also that the budget is just in a general overview. It's not. The budget needs to be something that we actually make an effort to comply with and make sure that we're spending uh, in line with what we have. It als- also last, last week, Morrow said, we're ready to proceed without even reviewing it or having a follow-up meeting.
That's not true.
It's a quote. It was eleven point forty-three in last week's workshop. Morrow said, we're ready to proceed.
I thought you said we didn't discuss the budget or have any input on the budget at all and didn't talk about it.
Commissioner, we're, we're not going to entertain this right now. You don't know what conversations I've had with the auditor. You don't know what conversations I've had with Chrissy.
So you've had private, the two of you have had private.
I haven't had her with them.
Okay.
He must be. I've talked to the auditor about the budget.
What she said was that it was recommended based on Christie having discussions with all of the departments, and it did not in- include the Board of Commissioners. We were all, I, I know the media was there at that meeting last week, and it's for public consumption on the, um, on the YouTube channel. So the Board of Commissioners had no input in this. It's that the budget requests are greater than the estimated revenue. Uh, there's no capital budget, no input from the Board of Com- Commissioners, no projected budget over the years, uh, over for future years. And that's, that's concerning because last year we were six million dollars over budget, and I think we need to make a better effort to do.
That's not true.
Chrissy, is that true?
I believe you said it was five point eight.
Christie's Inspector Auditor's Office, we were not over our budget. Our original budget, our revised budget at year end was over what our original budget was.
Right.
That happens. Our original budget is set.
Five point eight million, I believe it was.
It was set a little low, and we've brought in the past, as we've said before, that in the past it was set low. The general fund was run on an over-budget basis, and it was corrected at year end. But we had a four point some million dollar cash carryover with encumbrances of over a million dollars. So unencumbered fund balance for general fund was a little over three million dollars. At home, I'm sorry. And that was on the overview, which I sent. That budget is not a general fund overview. I sent a summary. There was an overview of the general fund accounts along with a detailed account that was attached.
I, I just believe that correcting everything at year end is not the way to run, uh, accounting.
Agreed, and which is why we are trying to do things a little differently this year. Uh, every department put their budget requests in. We did not create these numbers. They put their requests in, including the Commissioners' office. We reviewed them, tried to make sure they were in compliance. We did discuss it with the departments to see where we could make adjustments to be in compliance.
Then there were no discussions with the Commissioners at a public meeting. Actually, the auditor recommended not having a public, um, budget workshop last week.
We had a public hearing in November. We've never had, the only time we ever had two public hearings was last year, and that was because we had a new county commissioner who was not able to attend the November hearings. We've, we've never had two budget hearings.
That is, is a hearing where the department heads and elected officials come in and just present their budget. It is not a workshop. It is not included.
Sure, you have every chance to ask every question of those department heads, and you sat there and said nothing.
That's what the November budget hearings are for.
That's incorrect. I, I mean, the media was there.
Which budget would you like to pass? Which would you prefer to pass? Do you have a budget prepared for, since the Commissioner should prepare them? Do you have a budget prepared?
I'm tired of your gaslighting. This is not right. This is what you do. You rubber stamp.
Okay, then what's your, what's your alternative?
It was something that was.
I'm asking what your alternative is.
I said, I've been saying this for years. It's a responsibility of the, of the Commissioners. We should, we, there is no one capable or qualified in our staff of, as Commissioners, that it, that can, that does budget management or financial oversight. It should not be done by the, by the, I appreciate what you're doing, but we should at least have someone rather than like, you know, office ladies that don't want to do what they're asked to do. We really should be investing in, in, in staff that is capable of.
We have a legal opinion from the Attorney General's Office as well as the state, yes, that we're doing it.
Right. The question was not posed correctly. That's the difference is because I know that she, I know she sent that question, and I saw the question that she sent. And the question was assisting. There is a difference between assisting and fully doing every single portion of it. That is our statutory duty. We should have staff to do that. We should at least have some, we should at least have some input on it, and we don't.
Have input. We hold budget hearings. We had workshops last week.
There was no workshop related. Last week, we didn't, the numbers weren't even there last.
You didn't even come to the workshop. I discussed it.
Where I submitted them on Thursday afternoon, the recommended.
Right. I got that.
But I've not heard anything back with anyone else's suggestions in the last week.
No suggestion.
We're available. We've talked to all the, yeah, until today, this is the first we're hearing. Any concerns about it, what was submitted last Tuesday.
And, and at that last meeting too, I said that there is no capital.
Yes, there is. MCO Sales Tax Fund and the, and the Rainy Day Fund is the Casino Revenue Fund.
Is there a capital budget prepared?
There's the general, there is the.
Is there a capital budget prepared?
There's not something that we consider a capital budget.
Sitting there and grilling like this.
It is, there is a. Answer is a no, and I know you didn't want to say no because he just said that there was one.
The Casino Revenue Fund and the MCO Sales Tax Fund is what we use for capital projects, period.
Do you not know what a budget is, Mom?
But, but I'm sorry.
Call it something else doesn't mean it's not a capital project fund. That is a fund.
Do you know the difference?
I'm done. I'm done.
I know you, because you don't have any idea what the difference between a fund and a budget is. That's embarrassing.
Sixteen years with the Auditor's Office, and I've been here thirteen years. We have budgeted for all of the funds and capital expenditures in those funds where we use for the larger expenses that we need that pop up throughout the year. The general fund, we did, everyone's request was a lot larger than what we had estimated as, you know, what we would have for estimated revenue plus our unencumbered cash balance. So we limited that to our general operating procedures and are planning to use those other funds that Commissioner Cantala Mesa mentioned for the bigger projects that come up as the year goes along.
Any budget.
And that, those are our, what you would call our, our capital project, basically, I mean, they're not.
You voted on every capital project that we had.
But that's what we use it for.
On roofs and HVAC systems and everything that we've had.
Dangerous and it's irresponsible, and that's the end of it. Call the question.
Okay.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because we had no budget, uh, workshop and no input, and it was done without us. We don't even have a whole look at what the capital, uh, budget is.
I'm sorry.
Uh, no.
We discussed. We did have, we did have a budget workshop last year, and I, and I was in agreement not to have one this year. The way you behaved in the, in the budget workshop last year, we couldn't get anything done.
Okay.
And we ended up during the meeting. So we had a budget workshop last year, and you couldn't behave.
Dirty sheriff snatched up my phone and threw it down. Okay, that's what, because, yes, that's absolutely what happened. It's all, it's all on my video, and I made, I made a suggestion that the sheriff look at alternate ways to save money in the jail because he continues to be over budget. And so when I made that suggestion, he got upset and showed who he is again. So.
When he approached the table, you shoved the phone in his face, and he knocked it out, knocked it away from him.
Just this, just this, just this.
He was exonerated in court on your summary judgment. Remember that part.
Item number four is to appoint Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, as the Board of Commissioners Representative to the Board of Revision, and to appoint Commissioner Morrow Cantala Mesa as the alternate representative to the Board of Revision.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Um, because it's the least experienced and un-knowledgeable individuals that relate to this, it's absolutely no. They continue to appoint themselves to things without appointing me, and I have education, experience, and, um.
And you are contesting the taxes, and you are, you are questioning it. So I don't know how you go in and tell them it's wrong, change yours, but then you're going to sit on the board for other people. I, I don't understand how you could do that. It's a conflict to me.
No, it's not.
Item number five is to amend item number thirteen, Commissioner's Regular Meeting Agenda, to appoint three Trumbull County residents as members of the Trumbull County Tax Incentive Review Council for the term of February first, twenty twenty four, through January thirty first, twenty twenty five, in compliance with O R C code five seven zero nine point eight five A two. Amendment is necessary to remove Morrow Cantala Mesa as a member and appoint Mr. Mark Phillips as his alternate, and to change the location of the meeting, which is Thursday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty four, at ten a.m. in the third floor conference slash training room.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
I, I have discretion. This is, I asked last year, and I know they've changed things over with the, uh, Tax Incentive Review Council since decades ago when I was associated with it. And they just take the word of, um, Nick Coggins. He just comes in and gives everyone a sheet that doesn't even provide any supporting information. Could, i- if anyone's on the phone, can, or can we just make sure that whoever oversees that process, that they actually give us the information in advance so that we could look at it? Um, I, I prefer to actually have the people who are receiving those tax abatements show up and, and, um, speak for themselves because that's what was done years ago. They would actually come in and try to, and justify the reason why they want their abatement and, um, the work that they've done in the community. And I think that makes sense if we're giving people, um, and businesses that much of a break. Can people be quiet back there?
Down the hallway.
Or can you close the door? Okay.
For, okay, for item number five, Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
And.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Well, I would, I was saying, uh, I would like who, to have that information in advance, and I, I requested that they bring the business owners in, and it was said that I believe the auditor, someone else isn't in charge of that.
Commissioner, you're, you're a member of the board over there, and you can bring it up to the Tax Incentive Review Council.
Before. I did it last year, and, and it doesn't sound like they're interested in doing anything different than the way they've always done it.
I mean, that's, that's their own board, so.
Okay, Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number six is to award a contract to the lowest and best bid submitted by Proscape Septic and Landscape Contractors to replace three home sewage treatment systems for income-qualified households located in Braceville, Bloomfield, and Johnston Townships who are eligible for assistance through the P Y twenty-three H S T S Reserve Program in the amount of forty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seven is to award a contract to the lowest and best bid submitted by Two M Services LLC to replace home sewage treatment systems for two income-qualified households located in Hartford and Howland Townships who are eligible for assistance through the P Y twenty-three H S T S Reserve Program in the total amount of thirty-one thousand four hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second your motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eight is to award a price proposal submitted by A and N Restaurant Equipment and Supplies in the, in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars for the Howland Scope Center Facility located at eighty-two seventy-three High Street, Warren, and to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to enter into a contract agreement with A and N Restaurant Equipment and Supplies in order to meet the rules and regulations of the C D B G program and local county requirements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nine is to concur with the Senior Services Advisory Council's recommendations for distribution of the Ohio Healthy Aging Grant and to authorize distribution to the agencies per contractual terms as listed for the term effective April first, twenty twenty four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, per acceptance of letters of interest for senior programs as funded by the Ohio Healthy Aging Grant per January fifth, twenty twenty four notification.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes, and I'd like to commend, uh, Diane, the Senior Services Levy Board. This was thrown on us kind of late. It was a grant from the state, and they did a great job in allocating the funds all through the county. I think you, uh, you turned over every rock, and I appreciate that.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, and as, and as last minute as it was, she still managed to get everything to us in a very timely fashion, and I appreciate that too. I looked at all the dates on the documents, and I could see that they were, it was executed expeditiously.
Item number ten is to exercise Trumbull County's option to renew the contract between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Direction Home of Eastern Ohio Inc., formerly known as Area Agency on Aging Eleven Inc., for access to the agency's social assistance management system for an additional one-year period effective March first, twenty twenty four, through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty five. The base cost for this program is five thousand dollars annually, plus the renewal of license fees for providers is four hundred forty-six dollars and eight cents per license. Six licenses are needed at this time for a total amount, including the base cost of seven thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars and forty-four cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eleven is to authorize payment to Direction Home of Eastern Ohio Inc. for local match dollars is obtained from Trumbull, Mahoning, Columbiana, and Ashibula Counties for Title III federal funding under the Older Americans, Americans Act to provide critical services for older adults such as home-delivered meals, in-home assistance, and other supportive services to be rendered for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twelve hundred and fifty dollars to be paid quarterly for a total amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twelve is to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies slash property owners listed, and those, those persons are Eastern Natural Gas, Richard Hale, Dominion East Ohio, A S W Pipeline LLC, and Carrilla Contractors, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Item number thirteen is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits for fleet vehicles requested by the companies listed, and those companies are Roniak Brothers Paving and Always Construction.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number fourteen is to grant permission to the county engineer to close the road listed, Old Town McDonald Road, located in Weathersfield Township. Closing is between Route Forty-six and Depot Street. Closing dates are Monday, March eleventh, twenty twenty four, through March fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, I'd like to make a point of personal privilege to grab the, the glass. I'll be right back.
Thank you. Item number fifteen is to approve the consultant agreement modification, number three eight seven one dash one for the T R U Old Town Viaduct, project ID one one six seven three three. This is an Ohio Department of Transportation Prepared Agreement modification between the county and the consultant in the amount of two hundred forty-four thousand eight hundred and six dollars for additional work for the completion of the project development process through the construction phase. The revised contract amount will therefore be four hundred thirty-six thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars. The modification is necessary to encumber the additional funding for the agreement in order to complete all design tasks per the negotiated fee proposal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number sixteen is to award the lowest responsive and responsible bid as submitted by R T Vernal Paving and Excavating, Inc. for the T R U West Liberty Street slash Trumbull Avenue Resurfacing Project located in Liberty and Weathersfield Townships in the amount of six hundred seventy-six thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-eight cents, and to enter into a contract for said project.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seventeen is to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for letters of interest for engineering services related to the T R U Genesee Avenue slash Elm Road Intersection Improvements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is a, um, I know you guys at the workshop yesterday didn't have any information. Did you get a chance to?
Yeah, we did. The turning lane on Genesee, left-hand turning lane.
Yeah. Mr. A lot, it, yeah, it's a nice investment. Um, the estimates are, um, eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, so it's going to be a great improvement over there.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eighteen is to extend the dispatch services agreement between the Tru- between Trumbull County and the City of Warren, wherein Trumbull County Nine One One Center shall serve as a dispatch center for the City of Warren. The City of Warren agrees to pay Trumbull County the total amount of six hundred thirty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents per year to be be, to be paid quarterly in installments of one hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. The agreement shall be effective January first, twenty twenty four, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty four, and will allow Trumbull County the time to amend the nine-one-one final plan as a more permanent solution to the existing three-year contract renewals.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, but we can, we can discuss. Okay.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Abstain.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No. I mean, we could have had some discussion. It would have been nice to have discussion. Um, it would have been nice to have been kept up to speed with this and to be a part of the process, as I was intended to be a part of the process until last year, um, the text messages between Morrow and his brother Enzo at the City of Warren demonstrated that they were trying to collude to help, uh, the City of Warren at the expense of, uh, the county subsidizing their costs.
If you listened to the director yesterday.
And, um, prevent, made efforts to prevent me from participating in the discussions on behalf of the county.
Commissioner, I can't help that the City of Warren did not want to negotiate with you. I can't help that. No, I can't. No one in the City of Warren, not the mayor, not the police chief, no, no one.
They were afraid. They were a little intimidated because sometimes.
No, they don't want to deal with the drama. They don't. They want to have normal discussion.
No, what you said in the messages were that we, me and Patty were going to come in and bury them with our.
Okay, well, we have a new director that negotiated this contract. Patty did not negotiate this. We have a new director that did this. She came up with a good formula for this. Now, you want to shut down police service, dispatch service for the City of Warren. We're getting an increase on past years. She tried to make things more in line with it. There is a nine-one-one review board that looked at this, of which you don't sit on, and, and you're going to go against it just because something last year that had nothing to do with our new director.
No, I want to find, the new director should have, if she knew that I was going to be voting on it, should have made an effort to speak to me instead of just coming out here.
He was here at the meeting yesterday. You were on the phone. You, you called in one time to go against the city drawer and tell them not to give an ambulance to them.
I wasn't even.
That's your one comment you had during the meeting. You could have called in when she was there and talked about it. If you were listening, you could have talked to any part of the meeting yesterday.
I wasn't.
The one, the one thing you wanted to do was, was taking ambulants away from the yard.
Morrow could have said that he wanted to, he was intending to abstain yesterday. Um.
Why would I do that?
Oh, why would you?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have to do that. You could have come to the meeting.
I was on the phone, and I wasn't able to unmute my. I was on the phone and I wasn't able to unmute myself. I had to call numerous times to be able to to do that, you know? We're allowed to let the auditor or anyone else who wants to pipe in, but you know? Okay.
But you did.
I would like to be able to have some discussion. It'd be nice if, uh, Tacy, if you're here, if you want to reach out to me after the meeting so we can get, maybe get this back on next week, and I'd like to have a discussion with, uh, or see more information, because I don't just go by what I'm given, which is a copy of the contract. I'd like to see meeting minutes and notes and that this is, um, something that is in the best interest according to the committee. And I wasn't provided any of that, so.
Item number 19 is to approve an agreement between the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners, Trumbull County Sheriff Paul Monroe, and Lexipole LLC to purchase the annual law enforcement policy and procedures manual and daily training bulletins for the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office. The total cost for the prorated amount and one-time implementation fee is $32,542.25 for the term effective March 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. The annual fee for the service starting January 1st, 2025 will be $20,853.90. The agreement has been reviewed by the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And discussion, uh, it sounds like a very good program that adds, it actually adds training. There is an admission that there has been no training for, um, Sheriff's Department employees. And I would like to, even though he's not going to be there that long, I'd like to encourage Paul Monroe to participate in the training, too. So.
That's a cheap shot that's uncalled for, too. That's, we're not going to tolerate that stuff up here.
Oh, well.
Mr. Cantilamasa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number 20 is to establish the renaming of Fund Number 304 to Enterprise Bond Retirement Fund for use by the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department. The renamed fund is to be used for the retirement of enterprise bonds.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantilamasa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number 21 is to authorize a settlement agreement in the case of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners versus Matt Morgan and the Chicken Coop Finley Lake LLC and Adam and Michelle Hamilton, Trumbull County Court of Common Police Case Number 2023-CV-01453, and to authorize the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners to execute said document.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantilamasa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Abstain. I don't have enough information about it.
You were in the executive session last week.
And I don't trust that. Look, um, Matt Blair was supposed to be doing the, um, collections, but not the legal counsel for the Board of Commissioners in order to negotiate things. It could possibly be a conflict of interest for him in the private sector. He is an attorney, and I don't know negotiating some agreements on behalf of the Board of Commissioners is a good idea for someone who's out there in, in private practice. Collections going after collections, that's one thing, but we never authorized him to work on behalf of the Board of Commissioners to be our legal.
He worked with the prosecutor's office on this.
That's not what this says, nor.
Prosecutor's office was in executive session with you.
Right, okay. I want to talk about executive session. That's a sunshine violation, too, so.
It's not.
It is. It is. You can ask.
Everybody, everybody saw who came in executive session with us, the prosecutor's office. It's a legal matter.
Item number 22 is to approve Contract Amendment Number 1 to the Engineering Agreement with Kleinfelder, Inc., formerly known as Pogomeyer Design Group, Inc. For the Almonds Wastewater Treatment Plant Replacement Project, County Project Number 9-S-20. Amendment Number 1 is for a reduction of $10,364.73, revising the total contract amount to $52,135.27. Amendment Number 1 is necessary to non-perform the construction observer task included in the construction and administration services and additional design and bidding services as outlined in the attached contract amendment number 1.
A motion to approve?
Second that.
Second. Carrie, I have a couple of questions that are more technical. Would you please? Thank you for giving me everything. Because I reviewed. Reviewed all of them.
Gary Newborough, sanitary engineer.
The question that I have specifically, um, is the impact on the sewer extensions. Basically, there's the, these are, if I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's the two package plants that are addressing the runoff into the lake, right?
Yes.
That's the, isn't it Sterling and Mecca or something like?
Sterling Drive and Mecca Drive.
Okay, so that's, if you're going to be, if this is going on, I just want to find out the impact on the sewer that has on sewer extensions. Because there are a lot of people asking about sewer sewer lines going toward Mecca, but if you're, if you're going to be doing this, is, how does this impact the future of running lines to Mecca?
All right, this almonds plant is in Newton Township. It is not in Mecca or Bezetta.
Okay.
And it's, uh, it was a package plant put in by a developer back in, I want to say the 60s. And it services, I think, 30 houses. It's been centered since the 60s. It's beyond repair. Things are corroded through. We need to just get an entire, uh, prefabricated unit and put it in there.
How did you figure out that that was the one in Mecca 20-some miles away from us?
Just move on.
That's what I just wanted to ask. I wanted to, for clarity, because the one thing I keep on getting asked is about, is about, um, lines going that direction, and I don't know how to answer people, so that's why I'd rather ask you.
All right, in order to extend lines in Mecca, you would have to come out of the city of Cortland. And we would need large interceptors, large deep interceptors to make that happen. And we're talking, uh, somebody asked me how much would it, just an estimate on how much it would cost to get on each side of the lake, the east side and the west side, and you're talking tens of millions of dollars to make that happen.
On both sides?
Yes.
You'd have to run it all the way from Cortland.
Oh, we would have to, we'd have to go inside the city of Cortland, get to the end of an interceptor and then start extending it. I think it's a 21-inch that needs to be extended up 46. If you want to get all the way to 305, no, not 305. What's the next road up there? 88, yeah, to get up to the Causeway, yeah.
And then would that have to be like, because there's a two ways, petition and interest, would that have to be through an interest?
Right, I would like to see petitions from, uh, yeah, in either one of those areas to make that happen. And in order to get onto the west side of the lake, you're looking at having to run an interceptor. Uh, it would have to be bored under, under, uh, mosquito creek there below the spillway. And then somehow we're still going to have to get, get up there in order to get all the way around to, uh, Huglen Black Sub Road. So, so I've looked at that. If you look at the general plan, you'll see that there's large deep interceptors that need to be built in order to service those.
And that's going to, and that's, is that part of the plan for the county that you see it?
Well, that is the general plan. It's been the general plan. That's the proper way to sewer those areas.
But funding is the key.
But yeah, we don't have petitions. I don't, I don't have anything to initiate those projects or anything like that.
And so it's just, that's just like decades down the road, kind of a general plan. The things that you're working on now are more of the things that are like the current decrees and things that are deteriorating, like you said, that this, it needs to be replaced in a more immediate
Yes.
way. Okay.
And I think we need to set a goal for that. And since I've been here, I want a goal for that to make it up to 88. But at the same time, there's some landowners that own extensive amounts of property that we don't want to tax it on them just because they happen to have so much frontage. We're going to have to find some federal grant money to do something like that. And as always, we're always looking for that, always working towards that. I brought it up to Senator Vance's office myself. It's something that hopefully we can do sooner than later, and it won't be decades. And then let's move on, because that's really wasn't pertinent to this.
I see these things and I just want to how to answer people.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Cantilamasa?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes, yes.
Item 23 is to approve the attached sick and vacation leave conversion plan for non-bargaining unit employees of the departments listed for the term effective January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. Uh, the vacation cash-in for this plan will be 80 hours and the sick leave will be 40 hours.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantilamasa?
I just want to commend everyone who participated and sent these and, um, who's going along with us. I know this is something that Mauro and I did when I first came on board because it was a huge cost, and we got it down to 80-40. It'd be nice to see others doing that, but I just wanted to, you know, say thank you to everyone for going along with that.
Mr. Cantilamasa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes. And, um, for the next sub, well, wait a second. I was going to say for the next several.
I have the amounts.
You have the amounts?
Yes, I have them.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 24, to approve the attached sick and vacation leave conversion plan for non-union employees of the Trumbull Common Police Court, Domestic Relations Juvenile Court, Probate Court, Central District Court, and Eastern District Court for the term effective January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. And those cash-ins are 100 sick and 180 vacation.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And, uh, discussion, because I'm hoping that my board will vote no. Um, honestly, I, it was said at a meeting that the courts, and this is a quote, and I have the minute mark somewhere, um, "The courts can do whatever they want," was a quote from Alex on last week's meeting. And they, they can only do whatever they want with a, with an court order. So it's up to the Board of Commissioners. We can say, hey, all the other elected officials are going along with what we're trying to accomplish here by reducing costs. We should be, as a Board of Commissioners, voting no. And we, and then if they want to increase it, let them take the responsibility for it. Let them take the time to draft an order and then let the public see the judges that want to increase costs of the county. It shouldn't be us just automatically saying yes. I think that we need to say no and let them put an order on. That's my opinion, and I hope that some, another, at least one other member of the Board of Commissioners would agree with that today.
Well, first of all, the, the public is seeing it. They're seeing exactly what they're, what's being passed, so nothing would change. They would just put a judgment order in, and we'd have to fund it.
But it looks like the Board of Commissioners supports that to just vote yes when they have to put an order.
We don't. We've made that publicly clear. We don't, but it'd be a waste of time because they just put a court order in, and they'd get it.
And I personally don't want to fight with judges and go against the judges like other commissioners or another commissioner does. There's been many judges you've called out from this bench up here. You've called for protests. You've disregarded what they've said. You've not had meetings with them. You haven't called them back. Now here's another judge in a different court, and I'm not going to play that game.
Let's just give them rubber stamp and give everyone what they want. Okay.
We don't have the authority to not do that.
Only if they can put an order on. We can say no, and they could put an order, and they could do what everyone else is doing. But go ahead, call the question.
So for item 24, Mr. Cantilamasa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
No.
Item number 25 is to approve the attached sick and vacation leave conversion plan for the members of the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association of the Trumbull County 911 Center for the term effective January 1st, 2023, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. I'll correct that. That cash-in amount is, um, 80 sick and 120 vacation.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantilamasa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number 26 is to approve the attached sick and vacation leave conversion plan for AFSMI Local 3196 employees of the Trumbull County Auditor's Office for the term January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. And those amounts are 80 sick and 180 vacation.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantilamasa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item 20.
And for the record, these say, uh, approve the attached, please don't talk, and seriously, go out in the hallway. This is, um, it says to approve and attach, and there should be something attached. Um, or it should be written to approve and then skip the attach and then put the amounts on there. So I know that.
This is exactly the way they were put on by the former clerk for several years.
Right, okay. So I'm just, I'm just making a correction. Um, and saying that whenever you say to approve the attached and everyone in the room is looking at the agenda, they're probably wondering what's attached. So I just think that it's important that if you're not going to actually attach something physically, that you put right the amounts in there. So moving forward, we do it, um, in a more transparent way.
Item.
Thank you for reading them.
Item number 27 is to approve the attached sick and vacation leave conversion plan for AFSMI Local 3808-A employees of the Trumbull County Recorder's Office for the term effective January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. And those amounts are 80 sick and 180 vacation.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantilamasa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number 28 is to approve the attached sick and vacation leave conversion plan for the members of AFSMI Local 2493 and the departments listed for the term effective January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. And those amounts are 100 sick and 180 vacation.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantilamasa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number 29 is to approve the attached sick and vacation leave conversion plan for the members of the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association Sheriff's Department, employees in Unit 1 deputies, Unit 2 sergeants and lieutenants, Unit 3 corrections officers, Unit 4 jail lieutenants, and Unit 5 clerical cooks, maintenance for the term effective January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. And those are, amounts are 120 sick and 240 vacation.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantilamasa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number 30 is to approve the attached sick and vacation leave conversion plan for the bargaining employees of the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services, AFSMI 458, for the term effective January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. And those amounts are 80 sick and 120 vacation.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantilamasa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number 31 is to approve the attached sick and vacation leave conversion plan for bargaining employees of the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services, Child Support Enforcement Division, AFSMI 3808, for the term effective January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. And those amounts are 80 sick and 160 vacation.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantilamasa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number 32 is to authorize payment of $51,594.99 to the Eastgate Regional Council of Governments dues for the calendar year 2024. Local dues are required to match federal and state funds at various ratios for the Eastgate Regional Council of Governments' different funding programs.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantilamasa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number 33 is to appoint Mr. Scott Leland as apiary inspector for Trumbull County for the year 2024. Mr. Leland will be compensated at an hourly rate of $15, not to exceed $1,500, and reimbursed for mileage at the IRS standard mileage rate of 67.5 cents per mile, and to notify the Ohio Department of Agriculture of Mr. Leland. And to notify the Ohio Department of Agriculture of Mister Leland's appointment.
Motion to approve, second.
And um, when, when was the dollar amount changed? Was it changed before or after the advertising? Yeah, we don't, we don't know that. I don't know that. I just heard that it was, they changed.
No, on here we changed it cuz it was incorrect on here. It was a mistake on here. So she corrected it on today's agenda.
Because, yes, but when was the actual amount increased? Was it before or after it was advertised? Cuz that would make a difference in um. An interest, I would imagine.
And what?
It was properly, or I'm sorry, Alexandra Divinci Bush, I'm gonna follow this. Uh, Human Resources Director, it was properly advertised at fifteen dollars on your one thirty one, two thousand and twenty four agenda. We put to advertise fifteen. It was just a typo. It is fifteen dollars and we corrected that yesterday. All good? Okay.
Mister Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss French cow.
Yes.
Item number thirty four is a routine liquor permit transfer. From LG and G LLC doing business as State Line Supermarket East Portion First Floor Only. To Coag Inc. Doing business as State Line Supermarket East Portion First Floor Only.
Motion to approve, second.
Mister Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss French cow.
Yes.
Okay, at this time I'll make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio Vice Code one twenty one dot twenty two G one. To consider the discipline of one sanitary engineer and public employee. It's my motion.
Second.
Mister Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss French cow.
Uh, yes. Don't you have an extra copy of the packet? I looked at it last night and I don't know like. You really don't. They took notes on it.
You guys keep putting in your articles about how she's a vet. And I think they had to actually take the situation.
You know, they cut all the fat out and they like.
You have any question for me? You really? You have any questions for me about that?
Not about that.
Sorry, Hollis.
Oh, my God.
She said he doesn't trust.
You know where he's going today? He ran about. Now he's going to drive the car. Yeah. That's over the band. That's where Marty is.
I'm not gonna always say.
Steelworkers are gonna be there. People were earlier.
You going separate one?
No, no, I haven't. I think I do try. You know, you ain't supposed to be going. No, I don't know how many go or not.
I never find out what I've got to.
I don't know.
Well, the thing is the steelworkers. It's not gonna think of the steelworkers if you want to go to concert.
No, 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 the thing is a steelworker, but he said usually they'll play a couple songs.
Yeah, it's about three thirty.
Yeah.
Well, so you'll.
I'll make a motion to reconvene. Excuse me, everyone. Make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to Ohio revised code one twenty-one dot twenty-two G one to consider the discipline of one sanitary engineer public employee.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirty-seven is to approve and ratify the personnel action for a three working day unpaid suspension of an employee of the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department. The employee will serve this suspension from Monday, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four through Wednesday, March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr.
I mean, just just general discussion. I I think it's important if we're going to discipline employees that we're consistent across the boards with all people in the same union because that's what we're supposed to do. Um, it's it and within the department itself. Now, the per this individual did sign the agreement, so I'm okay with it, but at the same time, um, the direct, we've had the director, we've had Clemens and Nelson, I think it was them recommend the type of discipline for the director when he would come up here and 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 um and be disparaging toward me. We've we've also had uh, an employee in our office cost the county eighty thousand dollars from letting letting um documents set and then the price estimate went up. And now this employee did cost ultimately, I think the 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 cost associated was about three thousand dollars, but the issue is we need to apply discipline equally and not give favor to to certain certain departments or certain people. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our regular agenda item meeting for today. Do we have anything for the good of Trumbull County?
I'd like.
Oh, a whole bunch of people. Let's let's start up here with our commissioner.
Well, I was just gonna recognize um trustee Suddles. I know I want to apologize publicly because I thought that was gonna be on the agenda today for for uh Valley View and the the drainage and the uh issues that that those um twenty-five homes are having over there and we've been dealing with for thirty years here in the county. Uh, Mr. Suddles, did you want to say anything? You've been working very diligently on that. You've been spearheading that.
I had another item, so I don't know if I can do them both.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Go ahead.
Morrow uh informed me and then Mr. Masaki uh gave me a call and said that that was approved, but it would take a couple of weeks, I guess, for the processes. So um I do appreciate all of the commissioners' help with this project. Like Morrow said, it's probably thirty years in the making uh that problem uh so to have it addressed uh is is gonna be a big impact in that community. The other reason I'm Dan Suddles trustee from Brookfield Township. The other reason I I I came to ask commissioners for something and this one's not gonna cost you money. But um we have a problem, I believe, brewing in Brookfield Township. Uh, you're familiar with McMullen Road. That's the road that runs off of Route seven. We're gonna put the Marx Tower for the radio. There used to be an injection well up there and they had problems with it and it failed or I don't know the particulars of why that that company abandoned it. There's another company that we're finding out in hearing the rumblings. They're going to try to put this injection well back in. It's not the same company. They're doing seismic testing now in the area. Their uh McMullen Road, if you've been there, is in terrible shape. They've approached the engineer's office asking about improving that road so they can take these tankers back and forth. They haven't purchased the property yet. Here's something that might saying seem simplistic uh on our part, but McMullen Road goes up and your parcel where you're gonna put your Marx Tower is next and then this property where they want to put injection well is beyond your parcel. So they need to access their property through yours. And I don't know if the commissioners could not allow that. I don't know if there's a way for them to work around it. But
Just math.
You know, I I I apologize is because I wasn't home. I I wasn't gonna come right away till I had all this material and I didn't know if I should send it to you in writing. I went over the map uh with my property maintenance uh official, the auditor's map where you can see the top.
Is it an actual road or are they going to need a?
Well, the road McMullen stops prior to your property or right at your.
Need an easement from the county.
Yes.
The same.
That's what I believe.
That's what it'd be nice to have. I'll hear what you're saying. It's still nice to see it written out in the map. It's showing what's going on and then we can.
I'd be glad to to do that and then present it to you. Should I forward it to you or come to a meeting?
The process if there if there's going to be a if there's going to be a road that they're going to propose. Or do you do you know that anything? Do you know anything about them as a trustee right now?
I I just bits and pieces, you know, I I I I had a name. I I did the property search. They haven't. The person that owns the property hasn't sold it yet, so I think they're doing their homework before they buy it. But they've approached the commissioner or the the engineer about either them, I don't know legally they can, doing the improvements on McMullen totally or if the engineer would be willing to. I don't know that process and and getting that rude road improved because it's it's really crumbling.
Yeah. On the type of road that it is and I don't think that the, have you talked to the engineer about that?
Uh, yes, I talked to him uh and and he didn't know uh.
Or Gary, I was gonna say.
No, I talked to Randy Smith, yes. Uh, on they they were just approached and I and I did ask his, you know, so I didn't know whether I could publicly speak about this at this point. Uh, but there those feel I've had residents call me. They know what's going on. And you know, there are wells in that area, the whole thing. It's adjacent to the school district's property.
Listed on the MLS, is it like a listed um for sale right now?
That I don't know.
Here here's the thing with these.
If it is, you could also reach out to the realtor to remind them that there's no that there's no roads.
I think he might be trying to sell it himself.
Oh, okay, okay.
The person that owns it.
And unfortunately, in Trumbull County, as much as we even put a moratorium on injection wells sent into the governor uh quite a few years back, but we've become one of the the unfortunately, the moniker of having the most injection wells almost or and I think now second or third most in the state. And we don't govern any of that stuff, but if there is a mechanism to where they need an easement from the county or or the county could uh in some way stop that, we don't want any more injection wells here in Trumbull County anywhere.
I believe the process starts with the um with the trustees too.
It does, but.
Would have to recommend or or something like that. I actually are.
You're familiar with the one on Route seven that that a a company put in uh not too many years ago. We fought that. Of course, like you said, uh ODNR, that's who.
That's who governs this, yeah.
They also get funds from oil and gas.
Yeah.
I don't understand, but um that one collapsed and then during COVID, they abandoned that one. It's on Route seven by the trailer park in north before you get to Yankee Lake. So we don't, like you said, Trumbull County, and I know Hubbard's having those problems. We certainly don't. Maybe because we're right across the state line and they're bringing us stuff in from Pennsylvania because they're not allowed to inject it in Pennsylvania. But I would just, that was like thinking, I hate to use the word outside the box, but you own that property in between.
It's the mechanism to where we can stop that. I don't think anybody in this county, we're tired of injection wells. We've become a dumping ground for these, especially like you said, the people in Pennsylvania come over across the border and use that. Uh, the they've shown to be detrimental to communities. Uh, the 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 biological and the health concerns, especially with the water table right there, people having wells. Um, that's something that we need to collectively fight if we can or find a mechanism to stop, in my opinion.
All right, thank you, and I'll I'll provide that information. I'll try to get a draw a a map, uh copies of it and.
Share it with us and the.
Should I bring it to a meeting or do you want me to email it to you?
For center or or you could drop it off or email it.
I can do it one or the other, then if there's any discussion, I'll be here to answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consent.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, anything from the board before we go to the public? Go ahead.
Mr. Glenn, lifelong Trumbull County resident, a couple of things I want to bring up. Uh, number eighteen that for the nine-one-one agreement with the city of Warren by not voting for it. Is the city of Warren still gonna be covered?
That that's I have the same concerns. I'm sitting here thinking through the rest of the meeting. Now we got the city of Warren is operating without a contract with our nine-in-one center. We just saw what just happened in Warren. I don't want I want to make sure no police.
It's the county seat.
Disrupted because of her no vote. I I want to make sure that doesn't happen. The department head went over the budget, had a nine-one-one review board. She increased the what Warren is paying. Uh, so they're paying more than what they were paying last year, which Warren agreed to. Uh, there Warren is already getting half paying half what all the other townships are paying. So Warren is getting a good deal on this, so their citizens are getting a good deal. But now she is axing that deal right now until we have another meeting to figure it out or until she gets her way to get with Tacy, who she just blasted, who just said she wanted her arrested for abusing nine-one-one. Now we're at an impasse here. What do we do for the people, the citizens of Warren?
That's what I. Believe I have the floor, ma'am.
Yeah, yeah, he's.
Blowing, so.
Yeah, I'm blowing because you were penalizing the people in Warren. You're penalizing the officers, the firemen, the citizens. Yes, you are. They're working. They have no contract to call nine-one-one. Well, neither one could technically pull the plug on them right now and say, uh, call nine-one-one. It goes nowhere.
This has been, this has been.
Because of your vote.
They went on months last year.
Need I remind the public, especially the outlying areas, that Ms. Frenchco also voted no for resource officers to protect children in the outlying areas. Thank God for you and Mr. Cantala Mesa to provide those resource officers. The children need safety and over, I'm sorry, ma'am. I am speaking now. Don't you?
That's exactly what you do, Commissioner.
He has the floor.
To quote you, for God's sake, listen to me.
Your your behavior and conduct is scary.
It replicates you every single week.
Thank you.
Come to where my.
Go ahead, sir.
And followed me and taken, please.
I I I have no interest in anything you do, ma'am. Not not in the least. I I don't bother you. I have no interest. I would never risk my freedom because of someone like you. You're vile, you're disgusting, and even Mr. Smith's boss called you despicable and deplorable in endorsing your opponent. And he only two things, throwing the water and the way you treat staff. You treat your colleagues and the staff terrible. And and this experiment here i- is gonna come to an end very quick. Trumbull County can't afford four more years of this. Number thirty-three, Mr. Leland, the appointment. This was a very good appointment. I know, Mr. Leland. I actually bought his childhood home off of his mother and he is very interested in the bees, so.
Very active with the fair. He's very active in Trumbull County beekeeper.
Absolutely.
I'm glad that he applied.
Great appointment. Thank you very much, Mr. Malloy.
Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. Uh, I want to make sure that the board is aware that yet again, Ms. Frenchco recorded this room with her phone while y'all were in executive session. So I guess I'll have to file another police report maybe on that today. This will be at least the third one I've done now. Uh, earlier in the meeting, Ms. Frenchco spoke of conflicts of interest. Did y'all miss the part a couple of weeks ago where I said it would be a conflict of interest for Frenchco to vote on anything pertaining with Debbie Roth? Did y'all miss that? Because she voted on something that Debbie Roth is highly involved in. Debbie Roth is leading the charge on that damn issue, her and her, our lives count. That is a conflict of interest. Frenchco used her in court as a witness against me. What are we doing here? She shouldn't be voting on that. And you know, even though Ms. Frenchco is not gonna be here next year, while she's here now, maybe she could use that microphone that she's been told a million times to use. She brags about how smart and educated she is, but yet she can't find that microphone. Maybe she could attend the workshops on Tuesday so that we don't have chaos on Wednesday. Is that so much to ask for somebody who makes a hundred thousand dollars a year? A hundred thousand dollars. Does anybody understand how much that is? I mean, she's throwing water on people. She comes in here wielding a hammer and smashes the divider in a room full of witnesses. Yeah, I never charged on that. She makes fun of people. She calls you fat and stupid. She attacks county employees. How much money has she cost this county in lawsuits? How much more can this county afford? She's trying to push a seven million dollar WRTA down the residents' throat of this county? When Mahoney's gonna vote on it? The list goes on and on with her. She's abusing nine-one-one after she was told not to. It just doesn't stop. She thinks that rules don't apply to her. She's above the rules. She thinks she's above everybody. March nineteenth is right around the corner, folks. Vote her out. And and Randy Smith, the the county, was it the county engineer? How much money did he cost the county in his lawsuit? What was that for? Sexual harassment? Was it? How much was that? Oh, I thought it was more than that. I thought it was like a hundred and fifty. Anyway, seventy thousand. Ten dollars is too much. Should we be having sexual harassment lawsuits coming out of the engineer's office? He's up for election too, guys. Oh, and don't forget about Randy Law. He's garbage. Thank you.
Weird, as always.
How you doing? Mark Phillips, Trumbull County resident. Uh, on a different note, um, I want to thank uh Commissioner Cantamalasa to appointing me on the Tax Incentive Review Council. I think it's a good idea to have an outside perspective on what's going on in the county with tax abatements and everything. I look forward to working with you other two and I appreciate it and hopefully we can benefit this community from here moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for your service.
Good morning, Commissioners. Terry Shavers, Braceville Community Foundation, trying to give you an update on our African American museum in Braceville. We have meetings once a month uh with the community, with the uh residents, current residents, and with former residents to talk about what we should do there in uh in the museum, what kind of exhibits to have and how the community would like the mu- the museum to be constructed in. Um, so we decided on a name and we're gonna call it the Braceville African American Heritage Museum. Um, so construction is currently underway. We uh demolition should be done potentially today. It'll be done this week for sure. Uh, Brian, uh, so Ryan Yost, uh, Yoho, Ryan Yoho is gonna do the septic for us. Um, and so I'm just trying to give you a little bit of update so you know that we are making progress. Uh, any questions? Nope.
Just anticipating the grand opening.
Okay, uh, so uh construction should probably be done in June and opening was shooting for July first. All right.
Great. Thank you again.
Commissioners, we have Auditor Yoder on the line. Would like to say a few words.
Okay, we'll get to the phones here in just a second.
She has requested to speak now.
Okay, go ahead. Star six, uh, Auditor.
Hello, um, Alex has some handouts for you. Um, Commissioner Frenchco earlier cited that the letter that was uh for the request for the Attorney General opinion was not correct in what it requested and did not outline the situation correctly. I think it's important for the record for people to hear that it did, so I've given you copies of that letter and I'm going to read it. Uh, this is dated October third, two thousand and twenty-three. Dear Attorney Joe General Yost, recently we have had a matter arise relative to the Trumbull County Auditor's Office where it does not appear to be a great deal of existing legal authority. After consulting with Auditor Martha Yoder, she has requested that we obtain your opinion in this issue. As such, I am specifically and respectfully requesting your opinion on the following matter. It is clear that pursuant to chapter five, seven oh five of the revised code, the general county budgetary process and approval is the province of the Board of Commissioners. It is also clear that a Board of Commissioners may appoint a county administrator who then has statutory power to keep the board fully advised on the financial conditions of the county preparing and submitting a budget for the next fiscal year, uh revised code five, seven oh five, two nine and five, seven oh five, thirty F. Practically speaking, it is our understanding that a number of counties have indeed hired a county administrator and some have even hired a dedicated budget director. In Trumbull County, the Board of Commissioners presently has no administrator and no budget director. For many years, the Trumbull County Auditor has assisted the Board of Commissioners in the budget process. Hold on, in a number of ways. For example, the auditor has traditionally attended budget hearings where county officials and department heads explain their budget requests. The auditor attends many of the board's regular meetings to answer questions relative to financial transactions that appear on the board's agenda for consideration. The auditor has traditionally presented the board with a proposed budget for the upcoming year based on the historical requests and expenditures of each office and department. One of the commissioners has recently raised a concern that the auditor providing a proposed budget to the Board of Commissioners is improper and is interfering with the appropriate segregation of statutory duties. The two other commissioners appear to favor receiving the proposal from the auditor. We recognize that the revised code requires that a Board of Commissioners actually review and approve the county's tax budget and annual appropriation measure. However, we are unable to locate any legal authority that suggests the auditor cannot assist the board by providing a mere proposed budget based on historical data. Obviously, the Board of Commissioners is free to accept, reject, or modify this proposal prior to voting to adopt any tax budget or appropriation measure. In fact, we believe that the auditor as fiscal officer of the county is in a unique position to provide cooperative assistance to the board. We believe that it is legally permissible and practically appropriate for the auditor provide this to provide this assistance to the board, particularly where a majority of the board favor receiving this assistance. With this context in mind, is the county auditor permitted to provide a Board of Commissioners with a proposed budget based on the historical data? We hope that this brief explanation has provided you with the relative relevant background. However, if you should have any questions regarding this matter, and I will just leave it there. So we did request an opinion about whether a proposed budget, not merely assistance, but a proposed budget can be can be given. And the opinion from the Attorney General was favorable to this. So please, you need to not just read the words that you want to see, but all the words, Commissioner Frenchco. Second, I would like to also address the Turk, the Tax Incentive Review Council. You asked some questions. First of all, I want to want you to understand this is I am chairman of this, not just because I wish to be chairman, but because it's statutorily per the Ohio revised code five, seven oh nine point eight, five B. So i- in case you're wondering why I am chairman or my designee. You asked a question about the process and I want to make sure that you understand I've reviewed, I've spent a lot of time talking with Mr. Coggins about how this has been done in the last few years. I am perfectly in line with what he wants to do. I completely understand his reasoning on it. But just to review the process with you, he sent out letters, invoices, and reporting forms to all the twenty-six companies that currently have abatements. He uses the reports then to verify the job creation and payroll numbers, check the real property investment reporting against the appraisals by my office to make sure everything's realistic. Then he puts it in a readable spreadsheet to show what was promised and what was accomplished. This is sent out and pre- a a little bit before the meeting and also presented at the meeting. I think this is a very efficient and thorough process and I am completely in in line with it. You do receive the information. Um, and you just need to read it. That's all I have. Thank you.
For the record, that was the Attorney General's opinion I was uh mentioning.
Yeah, and I'll and I'll respond to that again. Um, the whole letter was based on assisting, 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 assisting. But in the case of Trumbull County, where the Board of Commissioners.
Think you're reading it correctly.
But in the in the.
Read the last line.
In the case of Trumbull County where there's no administrator, budget person, or anyone who's capable of doing that, then they they completely do everything. They provide not just, they don't.
But it is a pass to change or modify however we see fit. And if you have a different budget that you would like to pass, I'd like to see it.
We provide a proposed budget. That is exactly what we asked for as far as an opinion. That is what we got. Then, by the way.
I'm 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 sorry, Auditor Yoder, I'm I'm I will entertain looking at an alternative budget if Commissioner Frenchco has one. The problem is we've had budget hearings, we've had meetings on this, and we've discussed it, and she has no recommendations. Let's hear your recommendations.
There's just.
Do it now.
There was actually a recommendation by the auditor.
You can't just say things are wrong without a solution.
I think you just want to be difficult to be difficult.
Could have had a work session where we went over the budget and identified what we wanted to do.
That it was called budget hearings.
No, that's not. That's where they present it.
You had an opportunity to do that there.
For God, you're stupid. Like, do you not remember? Like, do you not remember, there, there's a difference between a hearing where someone, wherever your department comes in and for fifteen minutes and tells you what they want, and an actual work session that's public where the Board of Commissioners outlines what their priorities are and, and, and identifies what they want.
Did you call that meeting to have a meeting like that? Did you call a meeting?
Told not to do it.
Who was told not to do it? You're a commissioner, you can call a meeting. Call a meeting and do it, and do it to the public.
Just, just to clarify.
Who hasn't called a meeting on it? Call a meeting on it.
Want to do it last week. You actually, your quote was, I, and I, and I read it already and, and.
You're deflecting because you never called a meeting. You're saying a meeting was never called, but you're a commissioner and you can call a meeting.
Talking about having it, and since the little auditor decided to tell you guys that you don't want to, you don't want it.
What are your alternatives?
Because it didn't turn out right last year.
Smoke and mirrors, there's no alternatives.
We're ready to proceed, proceed without even looking at it last week. So go ahead. I mean, I'm done.
Go ahead, but what, what do you want to change?
Excuse me.
You don't even know we have a capital improvement fund.
You're done, Martha. I mean, this isn't the Martha Show. Like, just seriously, we heard you, you, you're out of town. Thank you for calling in. I appreciate it. Um, but can we get back to our, our meeting and have other discussions?
I just want to clarify.
Do you know, wait, wait, I did, I just gotta say something crazy, not to break.
Financial Officer.
Okay, you guys are.
Do you realize you're up for election in two weeks?
Officer.
And do you realize Martha was the highest vote getter in the last election? And you're criticizing her left and right. You're criticizing Alexandra. You criticized nine employees, uh, that since we started this agenda day where you went after.
There she goes.
What are you thinking?
All right, all right.
Not get elected? Are you doing everything you can to not?
She goes.
This is ridiculous.
And she's challenged, it's.
Can't help you, sorry. We got to move on. A bully, go ahead, say it. Pick any word, A to Z. You can say whatever you want.
You facilitate.
And my, my voters are all listening to this too. Good luck, March nineteenth.
I just.
W R T A, break out your application.
I just want to reiterate that you were given an overview last week. You were given all the details. There was an opportunity to ask questions yesterday in a public meeting, which you did call into. So you've had lots of opportunities to look at this.
No, no. Just, just. We, we, we should have had a pub. I've been saying since the beginning of time. I've been saying since the beginning of time how I want our meetings to go, how I want our budget process to be, and the.
Why didn't she call a meeting?
Will not listen.
Why didn't she call a meeting, Commissioner?
I actually wanted to do, um, zero-based budgeting.
Call a meeting and we'll discuss it.
Zero-based budget is budgeting is fine for projects, but not for government.
I have no idea what you're talking about, Martha. Idea what zero-based budgeting is. Oh, my God. There are communities that do that, and it is a better way of doing things. It creates more accountability.
One community. Name one community.
Okay.
Move to that community.
Yeah, right.
You can't because they do it exactly how.
That's not true. No one does. This is horrible. It's unheard of for a county.
Unheard of, but the Attorney General says we're doing it correctly.
It's unheard of for a county of our size not to prepare our own budget or have budget staff in place or an administrator to make sure that.
Have the ability to, to, this is a working document that is sent to you.
Two people who oppose everything that's progressive or proper.
Not one thing. You received the budget a week ago. You're waiting till today to say, no, I don't want it. But you have no proposals as to what you would change. Not one.
Okay.
Propose them today. It's ridiculous.
You have the floor.
If we're ready to move on, Commissioners, Alexandria DeMonge, Nancy Bush, Human Resources Director. I would like to draw your attention back to number twenty-four, which was the sick and vacation conversion plan for all of the courts. Um, it was said that I said that they could do what they want, and that is true because I am in, in my hand, I have an order from the courts that says, and I will read to everybody. Um, it is hereby ordered, the sick and vacation conversion plan covering all non-union employees for common employees court, domestic relations, juvenile court, and probate court are to be submitted to OPERS for approval shall contain the same terms and conditions, including the same maximum and sick and vacation leave hours, which may be cashed in as set forth in the sick and vacation conversion plans covering the union county employees which are being submitted to OPERS for approval. This order, it is further ordered that the terms of this order shall apply to any and all future sick and leave vacation conversion plans. The clerk is hereby directed to cause copies of this order to be delivered to the Trumbull County Commissioners, Maro Cantal Mesa, Nikki Frenchco, and Frank Fuda, and to the Trumbull County Auditor. So there is, there is a withstanding order that is still in place that we follow that.
To, to go against it is nothing more than grandstanding and trying to show that you're being fiscally responsible when you don't have the authority to do anything.
There is an order. I just read it to you. It was sent to you all.
We're, it's not in my packet.
No, you're right, because it was sent to you in twenty twenty-two. I don't need to send the same order every single time, do I?
Are the same, are, it's, it's a different Board of Commissioner.
Doesn't matter.
No, he's written opinions that say we're not bound by past boards, and neither are, and neither are.
This isn't a board decision, it's a court decision.
Courts are different too. There's different people, there's different judges there.
Then they'd make a different order.
So then, exactly. Where's the new order?
Well, I, I, again, will read to you where it says very clearly.
It doesn't matter. You can't just do it for the future whenever the elected official change.
And I understand what you're saying. However, it specifically says the terms of this order shall apply to any and all future sick and leave vacation conversion plan. I'm not a judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there anyone else that needs to speak? Hopefully, I'm the last one. Good afternoon to all those that are present.
Good afternoon.
I just wanted to share with, uh, the Commissioners today that, um, about Roberts Rules of Order. Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Shelley Jackson. And this is the Roberts Word Rules of Order that I use. I'm going to step here. If you notice, it's not glued together. It's a spiral. The only organization that you can get that Roberts Rules of Order from is from the National Association of Parliamentarians, which is located in Independence, Missouri. Now, I will say to you that, um, my suggestion is that every commissioner and every department head should have that copy because it is the twelfth edition, and it has easy access because it's spiral, it's not glued together. And then the department heads should have one. Then there should be a copy available to every employee. If not, the department head should have two copies for easy access. Because I feel it's important to know how to run a meeting. I've run meetings as a union officer for ASME OSHA, starting as a secretary and moving up to the ranks as president on a state level and also on a local level. I have no comment on what I hear every Wednesday when I'm here. I think it's important, I will say this, that everyone should remain professional and kind to each other. But in saying that to you, now the contact person, uh, for the National Association of Parliamentarians is Susan. I called her yesterday, and I called her to see if they would make this in a large print. They do not. Now, the cost is twenty-five dollars. Now, if you notice in mine, I have a little plastic packet. They do sell the, um, tabs to you for a fee, but some of us want to put our own tabs in it. And that's okay, too. But see, sometimes we have to come up here as teachers. Knowledge is power. And we have young people who want to go into government. And we have to think about the examples that we are setting for them. We must consider that because those of you that are out there now are not always going to be in that position. The next generation is coming. And they're going to go back and look into archives and say, this is not how I want to act. This is not how I want to speak to another human being. And keep in mind, it's about the voters. It is about the vote. It's not about you. It's about us who vote for you. And I will say this to you. Any position that you have in the community, you are a servant. You are a servant. You serve us. We don't serve you. See, once we understand that ideology and that belief, then this community can look better than what it looks like now. So I thank you for this time that I spent with you. Many blessings to all those that are present.
Thank you.
Um, I want to say something about, uh, the comments that were made to the media yesterday and the news story that you put out there that was erroneous. Um, there is a story with, uh, information that was not verified. Um, you mentioned about Trumbull Memorial Hospital being profitable
Yep.
and making money and having enough funds to last them for six months. And I believe that you're, I don't know where you're basing this information from.
You, you weren't at the meeting, Commissioner. They get a hundred and fifty million dollars from their parent company uh, that, that was forwarded to them to be able to sustain themselves for the next.
Yes.
That came right from the CEO of the hospital.
And the, and the medical property trust, you do, you do know, you were talking about, um, other hospitals being interested or potentially, you know.
And they have visited. Two of them have toured there already.
Uh, and have they changed their minds since they?
They have not. There are still negotiations.
No, there's no, there's no, among whom?
But it's that, I don't need to disclose that right now. They're having their.
It's not, it's not accurate information.
You're absolutely wrong. You weren't there, Commissioner. There was a meeting last week. There were people that toured them around the hospital. There were board members that hosted them, and they are working right now with an outside group that they hired. They hired an attorney. Do you know that? Do you know that they formed an independent, a nonprofit, and they hired an attorney to broker the sale of the hospital? And they're working with a billionaire investment group that is working to broker this deal for them?
The concern is the, the, the cost of the, um, more, the debt service.
Right.
There's no, there's. I don't know what you're trying to.
And there are attorneys there that are negotiating with MPT on the debt service to retain services in the future and pay them back over a longer period of time or have them forgive someone loan in exchange for profits down the road. You don't know what you're talking about. You weren't there. You weren't on any of the meetings. I've had multiple lunches, not only with, with.
Lunches, I'm, I'm sure you have.
Yep, yeah, I have, with the people from the hospital, from CEOs, people that know what they're talking about.
Let's, let's.
And the business community here in town.
Okay, the owner, the owner also owns, is, um, an owner in the property trust. I, I'm.
They are.
So there's a, there's a, there are concerns, and one of the concerns that I have with our budget is like, is the coroner's office because the coroner uses the morgue there, and if they're slated for closure.
Have you not been at?
They're not slated for closure at this time.
Okay, I mean, they're.
We are exploring building our own morgue in the, in the building that we're taking over for the coroner. The old health department building in the basement so that we won't have to rely on that. It should be a part of the meetings. They're good discussions. And they're public.
You are not in the know with this hospital stuff, and there's a reason for that, Commissioner. They don't want to blow the deal. They don't want to scare business away. Yes, ma'am.
That's not correct.
Yes.
Uh, my name is Shelley Jackson. I just want the Commissioners to know that I will leave the address and phone number to the National Association of Parliamentarians with, uh, Ms. Shannon. Okay? Thank you.
Hey, anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Anybody on the phone line, Tim? Yeah, one last thing before I get to the phone lines too, is I would like, this is something continuing on last week. I brought up here, we, I wanted to reach out and have a special meeting with the Metro Parks Board of Commissioners. And it got back to us through certain channels. No, they don't want to meet with us. We, I did an interview last week um, that aired, uh, with a trustee from Warren Township again, and I'm going to reach out again at this meeting. There is a Metro Parks Board meeting at the end of this month where their board will meet and they'll be able to make decisions. And I would like to, uh, publicly invite them again to a meeting, a joint meeting with the Commissioners that we will advertise at a later date. Uh, but I'm something at the first or second week of April at their convenience.
I've already done that, and they, and I told them absolutely how to do it the correct way. And they used the fact that they needed legal counsel in order to notice a special meeting, which is so basic. They were in a regular meeting session when I went to, to their board meeting two weeks ago.
By yourself, you went representing the board on behalf of the board to vote on something that the board discussed?
All they had to, and to, uh, mention to them that if we had that meeting, alls they had to do was notice it properly at that meeting because they wouldn't be able to do it again until their next regular meeting, and they, they refused. And they said that they had to get legal counsel. I think that they're just using the legal counsel excuse as a reason not to participate.
Well, I'm going to give them a chance again. I had a meeting with Eastgate yesterday, and I'd, I'd like to give them a chance again to meet with us. And I would, I would ask that they meet with us April ninth or April tenth in the evening at the Johnson Community Center. That's a Tuesday or Wednesday evening. They can pick which date is best, and if they voted their meeting that yes, they would meet with us and, and have a joint special meeting, then we'll move forward with some big boy discussions, roll up our sleeves, go into a room and talk things out, and see if we can come to a better consensus than this impasse that we have right now. If they say no, then we can move on without them. We can move on as Commissioners, working with the trustees, um, and other means. But I'd like to give them a chance to come to the table. I've been, I've been approached personally by some of their board members in the last couple of days stating that they will support. They would like to come to a meeting. They're being told by their, their chairman not to negotiate with us, not to talk to us, but they are making their own independent decisions. They will decide it at their meeting if it's proposed. So there are people saying, ask us, they'll bring it up at their meeting and see what happens with the majority of their consensus. So I'm asking publicly, I'm asking that they attend this, they attend a meeting. There'll be a joint meeting between us, Warren Township trustees, and the Board of Commissioners, um, where we can go in and discuss these issues before it gets any further into hostility. Right now, we did nothing. There was a misquote, um, last week, and, and I thank Ray for bringing it to my attention before he pre-printed it where he asked if we had hired an attorney to sue them. We did not hire an attorney to sue the Board of Commissioners. We hired an attorney to explore whether we can spend, expend public dollars on an independent damn study. That's what we hired the attorney for. So I appreciate you bringing it up, Ray, and not printing it the wrong way and doing your fact checking, which you did. Um, and I would again like to reach out to the Metro Parks Board to do this.
Okay.
So wait and see what they say at their meeting. Okay, phone line. Star six, please. Go ahead and hit star six and unmute yourself. And identify who you are. No go. Second, second.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Thank you all.